I got you a report, Kelly Furnish, me y'all. Since the storm, we've issued 38 demolition permits, 151 residential re-roof, 23 commercial re-roof, 166 residential remodel, 11 commercial remodel, 29 temporary power poles, 57 electric service repairs, 8 accessory structures, and 14 temporary structures. And then we've issued increased cost of compliance letters, which is some of the FEMA operations. We've issued nine of those. So, we're moving, and we're ready to move faster. When they're ready to move faster.
Yeah, I believe you're gonna start seeing some more activity here shortly.
It's beginning to rumble, yeah, curious. And we've got staff ready to go, whatever comes, we can handle.
Great news.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not a question, just something that I will let you explain because I went to the building, apartment, and I didn't understand, but I called Jim. Jim explained the situation to me. Could you explain to the homeowners how to pull, what's the process of them pulling their own permit? They don't have to have a contractor to come and pull it for them. Could you explain that process?
Yes, sir. Florida statute 489 allows you to act as your own contractor. That means you gotta do everything a contractor does. You can hire anybody to work on the job as long as they're your employee. If you hire anyone that's not your employee, they have to be a licensed contractor. Any trade that requires a licensed contractor, if you hire them, you gotta have that. You must remain on-site and supervise the work yourself. You can't hire that supervision out too. In other words, you're the contractor basically. You've got to personally appear and sign for the permit. And just so everybody know, we've got a lot of people that have older relatives that are not here, and they own the property. Well, that's, you know, Florida statute, I can't change it. I mean, you know, we do the best we can.
That, what you're saying right now, okay, um, do we have an elderly person that is not able to go to the warehouse and sign and pick the documents? I think the lady that was there explained to me about them having to have a, having to have some type of power of attorney.
The, we can, we can stretch it in kind of certain situations, but statute does not allow for a power of attorney. It's just clear this states you have to personally appear. But, you know, if the situation's right, we'll do everything we can to help without getting us put in jail. But, you know, the law, the statute's a statute, and we don't have the authority to change those. But, we'll assist any homeowner that wants to come in and pull their own permit. They certainly got the right to do so. We caution people, don't hire somebody, don't pull a permit and hire somebody that don't have a license because that's a rude, first thing is, is the person that's contracted without a license is guilty of a third-degree felony. If, if someone pulls a permit for them, knowing that they're not licensed, that's aiding and abetting on them as a contractor, and that's a third-degree felony as well, as long as we're under state of emergency. So, don't get trapped with that, people. I'm working them every day in all of our jurisdictions. Somebody, a contractor comes in, no license, gets somebody to pull the permit, they give him some money to go get materials, and he either does have to work and leaves, or he don't do any work, and the money's gone, and we're turning them over to the State Attorney's Office and Department of Building and Professional Regulation, DAB. So, I just want to call them to do that. And if they've got a contractor that they've got questions about, if they'll call our office or come by our office, we can check the state's website to see if they have a license. If they're registered with us, we've got a copy of their insurance certificate, everything they need. And also, on the state's website, you can determine if they've had any complaints against our license previously in other areas. So, we'll help them any way we can. We want to keep them safe, and we want to keep them financially safe as well.
Bo, can you explain a little bit on the caveat that you've got a lot of people coming in and buying these properties that are, have been gutted, and fixing them up and flipping them? What I understand, if you're not a contractor and you're doing that, you have to hold that property?
Right.
Right here, right?
There's an affidavit that you have to sign when you pull your own permit. It's a disclosure statement, and it states that you will not sell, rent, or lease that property for a period of one year. If you do, then that's prima facie evidence that you are contracting without a license, and throws you right back to the felony state. So, yeah, if something like that's going on, and we find out about it, we get the complaint, we'll turn that over to the state, and they should prosecute. Any other questions?
Appreciate it, appreciate it, Bo.
Oh. Thank you, Bo.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Item number one under the agenda for me is ordinance 551, Emergency Flood Plane Management Regulations. This particular ordinance deals with preliminary flood maps. We've had a prior discussion on, this would codify into ordinance for the adoption of this board if they so choose. The adoption of the preliminary flood maps, which I think is important. This ordinance is proposed as an emergency ordinance under Florida statute 166041, which, if enacted, will require two-thirds permanent vote, which I think is important since the board has indicated its interest in following the preliminary flood maps going forward. In addition, this is step one in a number of steps that we're working, when I say we, Mr. Anderson and I are working on with Department of Emergency Management, on the flood plane management, ultimate ordinance that will be proposed to the board going forward. This would provide, codify the intent of the board as expressed previously, and provide clarification for the public. For that, I would, I would read the title of the ordinance. Ordinance number 551, Emergency Ordinance by the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, adopting the Federal Emergency Management Agency Preliminary Flood Insurance Studium, Preliminary Flood Insurance Rate Maps for the Purposes of Enforcement of the Florida Building Code and Regulation of Flood Hazard Areas in accordance with the Land Development Code, Sections 4-17 through 4-1, 4-22, providing for applicability, severability, and an effective date.
Counselor, did you need a motion for that first reading?
No, sir. Because it's under Florida statute 166, there's an allocation for emergency motions, so this will be the only reading.
Motion to adopt.
If, if there is two-thirds approval.
Motion to adopt. Motion, Commissioner Ashbrook.
I'll second.
Second motion, Alhawer. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries, file up. All right, so what's next?
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2019-02, CDBG Procurement Policy. And, Mr. Mayor, this pertains to applications and approval of the CDBG grant monies that the city wishes to obtain. This ultimately, this resolution pertains to the procurement policy. I'll read the resolution, Resolution number 2019-02, Resolution, Board of Commissioners of the City of Port St. Joe, Florida, adopting Community Development Block Grant Procurement Policy, repeating all prior resolutions to conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. Again, this generally pertains to procurement policy because we're obtaining funds from the federal regulators. The federal regulators have their own set of procurement policies, and we're essentially setting forth our policy to follow the federal guidelines for procurement.
Is this, is this basically just on this one single grant? For this one single grant? I don't want to get in a long, drawn-out conversation, but...
It would be for CDBG grants, period. But you're gonna have to anyways. The federal regulations have certain procurement guidelines that will be important that we follow, whether it be CDBG block grants or something else that we may seek reimbursement from later.
I just know we're gonna be applying for several more in the near future. Don't want to impede any of those.
Commissioner Alhawer, we did have, we had a site visit last week in reference to the latest application we put in that was, we thought the funding was way down the list, but apparently we're moving forward with approval process. So, in order to do this, they required us, they gave us 21 days to get this policy passed in order to move forward. Mr. Bruce Boustler's here if he wants to elaborate on it, but tell us the indication we have.
We're good.
All right. Any other motion? I'm in. Commissioner Alhawer, and Secretary of Commissioner Hoppel. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries, file up.
Next, Mayor, as the board is aware, or the commission is aware, we're working with Holland and Knight, which is a major law firm in the state of Florida and other states. They are helping assist us with some of the, getting through some of the federal and state red tape, trying to help us obtain funding, grants, et cetera. On January 24th, Mr. Anderson and I had a phone conference with Holland and Knight discussing some of the possibilities. At that time, there was, the federal government was still in shutdown, so that was slowing us down. One of the issues that they brought up was that they believed that it would be a good idea for the city to have a representative come to Washington at some point in the near future, near, not necessarily being a week from now, but the next month or two, which would make logical sense. That is one of the areas that we're working with the federal regulators, using some of their employees that deal with them on a regular basis, to meet with them in person, describe some of the issues that the city is facing, to try and appeal to them to provide us some of the funding that will be, is available or will be available in the future. Something for the board to consider would be to allocate somebody to represent the city when that time comes. Would the board wish to go ahead and determine who should be available, or the whole board, or take us up whenever we have a solidified date?
Mayor, I would love to volunteer for that. I've been working with Congressman Dunn's office along with Senator Scott on a couple of buildings that are being brought up that they're helping us with, and I would be honored to go represent the city.
I don't have any problem with that. Anybody have a problem with David going?
No, that's fine. I just don't think we need a big group of people going up there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, too.
Well, he'll be our representative.
Sounds good. I will make sure that I notify individuals at Holland and Knight that we've, we're prepared when they are on that matter. That's all I have at this time, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Zoom?
Yes, sir. First item I have, Mayor, is the SRF funding request. We've been working on this for, under the emergency declaration, to receive money back from FDEP. If you can turn over to page eight, here is the final tally that we are working on for the application to get submitted to DEP. I think it'd be appropriate this time to get formal approval from the board of the total amount for the SRF application at this point. We don't have approval. We were asking for it to try to get as much grant as we can out of the, out of the total out of there, somewhere in the 70% to 80% grant is what we're hoping for, Mayor.
And on this grant money we're gonna get, do we have to pay any back, or?
Yes, sir. There will be portion, this will be loaned, absolutely. Yes, we don't know the numbers yet. Right now, you just put in an application. Normally, you see in the range of 50/50, 60% max on a grant. This one, hopefully, they're gonna stand out to the 70% or 80% on there, so, yes. We don't, we get the numbers back.
We don't have any choice. I mean, we gotta get this.
Yeah, we gotta get it done, but I'm just going to the point that there's, there won't be other avenues for us to get grant money, different places. Isaiah, Commissioner Ashbrook attended a meeting a couple of months back. I haven't got where they told me they won't send me. I don't know if David's got his disc, but I know David's still in touch with some of these people, and they have some great ideas where we can find money. So, I've asked David maybe if he can get them to come to a meeting for us or something, and explain what, part of what they explained to us in a whole day, two days, just condensed it down to a 30-minute program.
Absolutely. We got a lot to fix, Mayor.
One way that Horn can help us here is anything that was storm-related damage, we can file for reimbursement through FEMA. So, just keep that in the back of our minds. We're going through a lot of this stuff.
All right. Any motion for approval?
Absolutely.
Motion by Commissioner Ashbrook, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries, file up.
Next, Mayor, is legislative budget request, another grant. We're trying to get as much grant money as we can. We've not had a lot of success over the last couple of years for legislative money. We did get money, approximately $250,000 for Jones Homestead. We're trying to think about projects that we know we need to do, but you're not gonna get that much early available this year. So, what we tried to find was, we reached out for three different projects, three different areas. One dealing with historical value, which is the Centennial Building. The second being environmental, which is a lagoon that we have to do years two and three, and we need to start next month as far as a DEP consent order. The third deals with parks and wrecks and tourism, which were damaged during the storm. So, these are three that we would recommend getting put into legislative approach, and see if we can get some funding. Like I said, we've not had a lot of success, but we would like to get those into that.
You're looking to put all three of these in?
Yes, we would like to put all three in and see what they tell us. They may tell us no, but at least we can ask.
Today's the last day.
Today's the last day for the, for the House, yes.
We have a motion. A motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, a second.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Alhawer. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I, um...
Yes, sir.
Jim, these parks, are these the only ones that are gonna receive, once we get this funded, are these the only ones that are gonna receive work on, that's just what we're putting in for?
Whatever your wishes is, would be what you, what they would fund, if they fund it all. But, yes, sir, the three that right now that we have indicated were due to Parker because of Mr. Smallwood has a task order to work on the bridges that were damaged from the storm. Swinging over to Frank Pate Park, you've got the gazebo and the city pier that were damaged that he is working on, those two as well. And then getting down to Clifford Sims Park, we've got some major damage. Mr. Graham is working through the parking lot, and we, the fishing piers, all that stuff out there. So, that's the three.
I see where you're going with this. Is there any way to kind of make this more of a broad, city parks, repairs? Or do you have to name specific?
They haven't got that specific, I don't think, through there. I think we can just, if you want to add something else?
Just call it city parks.
We could. We can see what happens, absolutely.
Would that be better?
Yeah, I just, let's know that these parts really need to work done, you know? I understand that, you know? And I just, I need, there's a lot of parts out there that were really hit and destroyed. I think we need to try to expand and cover some of those things, that's what.
We'll call it city parks, then? The amount we were trying to think about was $650,000 towards wishes. We can raise it up to 900, a million, and try to cover more if you want to.
Will that affect us getting the grant animal? If it could be done? If it will, I think we just need to focus on these three if it's gonna affect that. Let's just focus on these three and just take care of that, and then just move on from there.
It's hard to tell. It depends on how much money the legislature appropriates this next year. You know, being a storm, they may appropriate more money. In the past, the last one we've got, the only one I can remember is the $250,000 for the Jones Homestead. It just depends on what the feel for the legislature is this year, I'm not sure.
I think this is our, I mean, this is our opportunity this year, you know? There was not a lot of affected counties, and we're one of them, you know? They were a city that's been affected, and I think that they may be a little more lenient with appropriations to our area. So, I would, I say if we got an ask, ask for it this year. We never have this opportunity.
What do we feel is an appropriate amount to ask, then, I guess, would be the next question? 900,000, $1,000,000?
It's gonna be important, though. All of us on this board need to understand that all of these appropriations are in bill form, and whenever they're at a subcommittee, someone needs to be there from the city. One of us or one of y'all have to be there, because it's a lot easier to say no to someone who's not standing in front of you. If you're there, and you start telling your stories about how it's affected our community, I don't think, they won't look you in the eye and tell you no.
Yeah, definitely gotta follow them.
You gotta follow them. Ask for so much that we get denied, you know? I just, if we have to focus on these three and get that done, maybe we can come back later and get other things done. I just don't want to ask for too much, but we can't get this funding, you know? So, I, Jim, I'll take, you've been speculating this, I mean...
There's not a major number, you're exactly right. I would think you would probably want to ask less than a million. I would say that I probably wouldn't ask for more than 950,000. It's just my opinion, but I do not know how much money the legislature is gonna appropriate next year. They may appropriate more money than they have in the previous year.
This is the first year we are without a representative at the House as well, so it's gonna be their staff and whoever, hopefully, is appointed to kind of help him out for that.
Any further discussion?
Yes. We're gonna leave it?
We'll leave, just leave it like it is.
We'll leave it at 6 feet?
Yep. I made the motion.
I second. I've got a motion, Commissioner Ashbrook, the second, Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, file up.
Okay. The next item we have is a reference to trash services bids. Approximately over a month ago, the city did decide to go out to bid with the county. At this point, the commission does have a couple of decisions it could make. They could look at extending the contract, or they could look at the bids, because we did go out to bid with the county. Staff recommendation at this point would be, if that's the case, to go with the bids, which the board will be, to go with the low bidder and allow staff to work with the city attorney to come up with a contract, but that's up to the wishes of the board.
Who was the low bidder this time?
That would be BCC was the low bid on the bidder.
On the bid?
On the bid, yes.
But, let me, let me say this. I don't care who picks up my garbage. I don't care if it's a green truck, blue truck, or a red truck. My job as city commissioner is to find the best service at the best price. That's what I think we're entitled to do. We're supposed to be stewards of the, of the money of the people that work hard and pay their taxes. So, I started looking at the bids, and then I looked at the contract that we have with Waste Pro currently. So, what I wanted, because one of the companies was a little cheaper on garbage pickup, and then the other company was a little cheaper on yard debris pickup, because we're looking at going to having that contracted out. Well, being the cheapskate that I can be with the city's money, obviously, I would prefer to have the lowest price for both services. So, I spoke with Jim about that, and I said, "Well, how can we do that? Because we have to stay within the bid guidelines and, you know, do it properly." So, we're at a fortunate place because we're actually in a contract renewal with Waste Pro. So, I spoke to Waste Pro and said, "If you want to have me on board, you have to have the best price and the best service." So, I took the two lowest figures and combined them, and it came to, what was it, 1602?
1602, yes.
Right. Well, I was gonna do away with the 02. I'm surprised it's still carried over. But I asked Waste Pro, I said, "Well, can you do the service and add the yard pickup for $16 a month?" And they were like, "We can do that." Well, of course, then I said, "Well, can you also look at this increase on the bid of 4%? Is it not gonna pay you 4% increase each year?" And this is all now speaking to them on the option of extending the contract. And I had some commitment that they were willing to waive nearly all of that increase, yearly increase. So, we now have a bid from BCC, and we have new figures to look at on extending the contract. And I want to say one thing about either company, and I think both companies are good, legitimate companies. No matter who is tasked with picking up our garbage every week, there's going to be times that they miss your garbage, there's gonna be times that they forget a whole street. That's not gonna change by changing companies, I don't believe. Now, I do know that during the storm, I was calling quite often to Chester Davis with Waste Pro. One time, we had garbage all over the stack house over at the Boy Scout Club, or, I guess not, Boy Scout, Boy Scouts, I think, one of the scouts. And within the same day, they had a driver go over there, solve the problem. Two days later, we needed a rollback at Centennial Building, and one of the Waste Pro supervisors were called, and boom, there's the, there's the container delivered. So, I understand that there's been issues with Waste Pro, and my argument is, there's still gonna be issues with the new company. Now, I believe it's fair to say that the company, BCC, has never been involved in garbage pickup in the city. So, that weighs on my mind as well. Are we, are we gonna bring in a whole new company? And they may be a wonderful company, I don't know about them, but I do know about Waste Pro, and I've been happy with Waste Pro. They missed my garbage one day. I went out there, can had been out there, the night before, I called their representative, I said, "Hey, you missed my garbage." Within four or five hours, they brought a empty container, loaded my can up in a pickup truck, and left. So, I'm going to suggest that we look at the lowest figures of both categories, that's garbage pickup and the debris, yard debris pickup, and take the figures that Waste Pro has presented, and extend our contract for five years. And if we have questions or whatever, I think both of the representatives from each company are here, but that's where, that's where I am, because I think that's my responsibility, is to give the city the best rate. If we go with the BCC figures, we're going to have an increase on what we're currently paying, and I'm not prepared to pass a rate increase onto the citizens of St. Joe. If we go and tie an extension to our contract, it's virtually the same amount of money we're paying currently. It may even, I don't know, maybe a penny or two less or more, but it's virtually the same, and that's what I'm wanting to try and do. We already have a system for our water, where we just about have to go up every year on water, because we owe $16 million on the water plant. I mean, that's just the facts of the matter. I don't want to get involved in going up yearly on the garbage pickup, so...
I have a comment about that, and I think, when we, when we decided that we would go out for bids for trash service, to me, that kind of threw out the ability for a contract extension, and the way that you got the figures to, to work with Waste Pro was kind of, you shouldn't have had those numbers. It just, it seems unfair, it seems like an unfair bid process if you do it in that way, if you're using the numbers from another bid to negotiate a current contract when they were competing bids. I do, I do have a problem with that, and initially, it was a 4% increase per year over three years. Initially, it wasn't 1602, it was higher than that. You know, we, we have a clear low bid, low bidder already off the bid process, and, and yeah, we don't know exactly how they're gonna do with, with the trash pickup service, but I know that we've had complaints. We've had numerous complaints. I've had dirt, well, and I'm not using the storm as judge, because everybody had troubles during the storm, but even prior to that, the phone calls came into City Hall, and the old, the reason why we hired, well, we asked them to hire Chester Davis was because the old system of just faxing a list of complaints one today wasn't resolving the issue. You know, I think this is, this is an opportunity for us to, to get a better service, potentially. I have spoken to the city of Lynn Haven, I spoke to their Public Works Director, I spoke to Superintendent Husdell over there, and they're big fans of the service that they're getting provided, their commercial pickup. I feel like we have a clear low bid, we should move forward in that, in that area with the low bid, and let them negotiate out the finer points.
So, you, so you want to go by just the bid price? Even though we have now been given a lower price on what the citizens will pay for garbage, you want to go with the higher price?
I can get a lower price for a car for putting a gun to the salesman's head, too, but, but what I'm saying is, you shouldn't have had that ammunition, you shouldn't have had that information to give, you know, to make them negotiate in a bid process that's fair. It's closed, you open it, and you have a clear low bid.
I wasn't working under the bid process, I was working under the contract extension, but we voted to go out for bid. That's, that's my...
Jim, what was the bid that the county, that Waste Pro, they, the county, when they bid for the county and the city? What was the bid?
There's, you told me specifically for just how the...
The orange pickup and the rim pickup.
If you go straight off the bid numbers, Mayor, just say. What you have is, you had Waste Pro for, this is for the city now. What you have is, you had Waste Pro for, this is for the city now, for garbage only from BCC is 1352, for, this is household, and then 1752 for household garbage and yard debris. It would vary for the commercial side. That's yard debris included for household. If you take the numbers from Waste Pro off of the bid sheet, it is 1202 for garbage only and $18 for roadside pickup as well.
So they were higher at that time?
On the roadside pickup and household garbage.
And then they come back, want us to do a contract extension for a lower bid, after they'd already seen the other bid, and that's not fair. We can be sued for that, I think. If we accept a contract extension after somebody else has already gave a bid, plus Waste Pro gave a bid, we're now subject to be sued.
I feel the same way on that. I mean, it's, they got.
I didn't know we had so many attorneys on this side of the table. Let's ask our attorney about this.
I'm gonna speak on this real quick.
Hold on, one, one time, one time.
I don't feel like, that, I mean, for one person to see another man's bid and then try to negotiate, that, I just don't feel that's right, for us to make a decision based on that. And two, you, we're just looking at, we're clearly looking at one number. When we start talking about the commercial rates, they're lower on BCC, and then you talk about 4%, which, on the, on the Waste Pro, and there's the 2% color, but now they're saying they'll do a 2%. I'm guessing that what you.
Well, actually, they're saying that if you go into a five-year contract extension, the 2% doesn't even come in at all. It would be a wash on the 2%. But like I said, I, the, the bid process is, is opens public record on the, on the bids, but when you have a contract extension, and I'm gonna ask our attorney to weigh in on that, instead of us trying to act like we're attorneys, I spoke to Jim and asked Jim, you know, can we talk about figures with Waste Pro? Because we're discussing the option of an extension. It's separate from the bids. That's the way it was explained to me, is it's separate from the bids. And they, Waste Pro, started dialogue with talking about extending their contract. Now, the bid that they went and gave to the county, when the county and the city were looking at doing it together, that was a whole nother idea. I think we're completely, not only expected to do it, I think that's our due diligence as commissioners, is to see what we can save the people that are paying these bills, and that's the people that we're up here representing. So Adam, what, if you would, what is your insight and opinion on what has transpired?
Mr. Commissioner, this board needs to determine if they want to operate under the RFP or an extension, but not both at the same time, because the individuals that provided a price would ultimately give Waste Pro an advantage if we're operating, if we're leveraging one against the other, because now Waste Pro knows if there was another price, they could go set below or set a higher or what have you. So we need to open one door, look in it, make a decision, shut that door. If that door means we're, we're not accepting an RFP, the city has that authority. But we need to put the bow on that, conclude that matter, and then move to the next step, which would be option two, which is to negotiate an extension with Waste Pro. But by using both at the same time, allow, Waste Pro has the advantage of leveraging public knowledge from the county-city bid with what they have now. So I think we need to address this matter one at a time. The board had asked that the city go out for bid within 60 days. We have bid numbers, and that's where we start. Ultimately, the city doesn't have to accept anything it doesn't want. But we need to start with the bids first, and then before we're getting, get into extending or not extending, because that is where the city's direction was, was to go out for bid, let's look at the prices, and we can make a decision. Certainly, the city can enter an extension with Waste Pro, that's the direction it wants to go, but to negotiate against, you're creating a situation, and I said, generally, a situation has been created, how about that, where parties know a number, and then are bidding against that number, when that opportunity is available for all parties. And that's why we should make a decision on the bids first, without talking about rate adjustments, whether, for anybody, whether it's BCC or, and I don't remember, I think there's four or five bidders, but any of them, Waste Management, Waste Pro, whoever may have been the bidders, we should, in evaluating the request for proposal, we should make it determined based off the proposals that were given in an open and proper solicited bid, and go from there.
And that, where, that, where, in line, the problem with me is, I thought there was an implication that we wouldn't have an extension because we decided to go out for bid, and that was, if that's not the case.
No, that wasn't the case at all. I mean, we'd be crazy to say, "We're, we're not gonna entertain extending the contract," because the contract price was not a bad price at all. As a matter of fact, I heard testimony, it was the best price in the state of Florida. So when, when we went out to bid, well, first of all, the county went out to bid. We just agreed that we would allow the county to bid, not only for county, but for also for city. But based on what our attorney just advised, that's exactly what I did. I looked at the bids, I was in the meeting at the county when they awarded BCC the contract. I had the bids in front of me. They openly discussed the bids. The county chose one company. I was not willing to pay the amount on the bids. I closed the door of bidding. I then entered into extending our contract with Waste Pro at a better rate, and they have agreed to that better rate. So the question is, is do you want Waste Pro at a lower rate, or do you want to bring in a company that's never picked up household garbage and bring them into St. Joe and just hope everything goes well?
I don't, I don't know where you're getting the better rate from, except for the residential pickup, because if you compare the, compare the, the, uh, commercial pickup, that, we gotta look at that, too.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I looked and I focused on the two aspects of garbage pricing, and that's at the house for the can and for the yard trash.
I'm just gonna go through these numbers, just on the commercial side, just so everybody knows. Waste Pro on a 64-gallon monthly pickup, $8. BCC, $6. Quarterly, $24 from Waste Pro, $18 BCC. Annually, $96. $72 BCC. That's 64-gallon, and then you got your 96 at monthly. PSJ, $8 BCC. $10 Waste Pro. $24 BCC. $30 Waste Pro. And annually, $96 BCC. $120 Waste Pro. So we, we need to look at all the numbers that we have, not just the single residential piece of it. What else?
Um, I'll just weigh in a little bit. You know, I have a good friend that works for Waste Pro in Chester, he's a good friend of mine. I had a couple of representatives of Waste Pro come to my house yesterday, they wanted to talk to me. I said, "Well, come to my house, let's put them right in my living room and sit down and talk to them for like 30, 40 minutes, I don't know." But one of my questions to them was, "Guys, how did we get here? What caused us to be at this junction?" Well, we talked about leaking trucks, we talked about missed stops, and now they want to bring in brand-new trucks, they want to bring brand-new cans. My question to them is, "Why didn't you get offered this eight months ago?" I mean, I, you know, I don't have a problem with Waste Pro's always disliking them, I don't dislike none of them, in fact, I love Mr. Chester Davis. And, but that's what I told them, I said, "You know, these things should have been handled eight months ago, not when we get to the point of we deciding maybe we're gonna change companies." And when it comes to working with the county, don't care what nobody says, we need to work with the county every chance we get. I'm tired of people being afraid of the county, like, "They gone, who do us every time we turn around? Let's give them an opportunity. You people out there deserve us to work with the county. And we don't need to get run over by the county, but we do need to work with them. As long as I'm the mayor here, and right now I am, I'm gonna do everything in my power to make sure that the city and the county pee back on everything they can, because without them doing this storm, city would be hurting. We peeed back on a lot of things with them, the city couldn't handle it by itself. So that's where I'm at, I want to work with the county. Any chance I get, don't have anything to do with the pet or the trash other than, I say, do what you should have done eight months ago, why are you willing to do it now? That's all I have."
And Ralph and Chester, I, I mean, we all have a dialogue together and talked numerous times, and, uh, I, I, I mean, that's, I hate what has happened is happened. I wish a lot of the issues were, you know, weren't necessarily what they were before and after the storm, more so before, but that's, that's where I'm at. My constituents are tired of the missed pickups, it's, especially when bears and coyotes get in the garbage, it's, it's, it's made it bad.
Well, um, I, um, me and Chester are good, good friends, and it's, it's not about, um, friendship, it's about, I think, more of the product, and I've talked, I've talked to Chester about it, and I'm, I'm just not satisfied with it. I would like to know some figures on, will this, will this bid affect, how would it affect the citizens' forces of bid? Will it make it go up substantially, or, because it's, it's gonna go up every year, we just can't put it on, on the garbage, you know? And that's, that's one of my questions, how would it affect?
Yes, sir, if you did accept a low bid, if you went with the bid process on there, you're looking at about a 15% increase. What that would do for the average household, currently, right now, it's 1865 for residential pickup. Recommendation would be, you would need to go to $20.15, because what you're still gonna have is, this would have, either one of these would have the company picking up roadside pickup, too, so we would get out of that business, but you still will have those special pickups, we're still gonna have the dumping, the code enforcement, we're still about to deal with tipping fees, so in order, in order to cover those costs, if you went with a low bid, or based on these numbers right here, staff recommendation was you'd have to go up 15%.
Jim, were you explaining also what it cost us in trash pickup, and, you know, where we're at with our, our equipment?
Yes. Uh, we, when we were going through our budget cycle this past year, we did indicate that if we're gonna stay in this business, we're gonna need to buy some new equipment. Our equipment is still operational, but it's very, very old, so, yes, sir, you would need to be looking at a new clam truck and a, and a service truck as well, correct? And right now, after the storm, one of our gentlemen that was in the business, and we had two gentlemen that are dedicated strictly for the trash pickup, so if we stay in that business, too, we want to hire somebody else, because we lost one that moved during the storm, and we have one gentleman that we have slid over to help us out with other functions. So if you've got either A, extend the contract, go with the low bidder, throw out the bids, if that's the wish of the board to start over, but you've got to make a decision.
Commissioner Langston, as far as your question on how this would affect the people that pay the bills, I believe that the figures are, if we reject the two bids, and we take the new figures, the new proposal on extending the contract, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of $170,000 savings to the city of St. Joe over a five-year period. You will lose that money, you will lose the 170, and Waste Pro is at about what we had discussed, somewhere around $170,000 savings to the people that are paying this bill. So you can add that to your 15% increase if you go the other direction.
I don't understand where that, where that's coming from.
Well, if, if the mayor will allow them, they could come up and speak to that.
Sheriff, come on.
Commissioners, my name is Ralph Mills, I'm the regional vice president for Waste Pro and mayor, sorry. I just want to go on record on some things here, you know, ultimately, what you guys do up here is what you do, okay? First of all, we talked about a bid versus extending the contract. When we were in the Gulf County RFP meeting, Jeremy Novak sat up there and said, "If we don't like these bids, we're just gonna exercise an option that we have." So there is an option to extend. There is an option, an option to extend. Furthermore, the 170, this comes right off your invoice. We, we, we send an invoice to you guys every month. These numbers, you know, that you talked about six versus eight, here are the numbers. Look at it. We, we, you said BCC was lower, they're not lower on front load. On the big-size cans, we're lower. You've got a, that's, that's right off your monthly invoice, that's every, every unit price, that's everything on there. That's off your invoice, that's off your invoice.
I'm strictly using these numbers, Ralph.
Yeah, you're using the numbers, but you gotta, you gotta multiply it against the unit rate. You know, you, you have to multiply, you have to take a unit rate times a price to get to the numbers. This was provided to you guys last week, it was provided to you. And, you know, I asked the city manager to please get with Michael Kord and verify these numbers. These, these numbers are the numbers. The only numbers that we changed in this whole thing, that we bid your current numbers, that's what our bid price was, we bid the current numbers, is what we did here. The only thing to change is we bid 495 on the, on the yard debris pickup, and I agreed to go down to $4, but everything else, we haven't changed a bit. I mean, that's the only thing we changed up here. So again, at the end of the day, you know, we're cheaper, we're $175,000 over a five-year period cheap.
$175,000.
Over a five-year period.
If we extend the contract.
And I invited somebody to look at these numbers, I've, I've provided these numbers, and it doesn't sound, sound like that, you know, you guys have gotten these numbers. You know, we talked about going two years without an increase, we said we would cap the CPI at 2%, we agreed to do that. If it's less than that, it's a one and a half percent, that's fine, we'll go with one and a half percent. So, you know, we've had a very good relationship with the county and with the city. We've been over backwards during the hurricane, you need roll-off containers, we put them out all over the city, we put them out at every firehouse in the county, we didn't charge a dime on that. We opened the transfer station up for free for people that weren't paid customers. You know, we've been a good, you know, good vendor for this city, we have. And we talked about missed pickups, you know, from time to time, you're gonna have that, but now ask the city manager, how many do you get? Maybe, you know, four a day or something like that. Couple of them could be, you know, deliver a cart or something, so, you know, again, ultimately, I just want to be on record on this, it's up to you what you want to do. If you guys want to take the contract, it seems like your mind's made up. If you want to do that, you're throwing away $175,000 over a five-year period, so, thank you.
Jim, you want to explain that?
I have not went into detail in one of those, there's so many moving parts on that thing on there. Like I said, I can tell you if it's exactly what we are charging today, yes, he did provide that to us the other day on there, but I have not went through every single number of this contract. I can tell you, based on the high numbers of your residential, what you are looking at, the numbers based on the sheets that he gave from BCC is 1752, that would include the roadside pickup and the household garbage. That's the bulk you're focused on there, it's over, was it, over?
1700.
1700, so that, which is, the commercial varies, you gotta go through every one of these to do the car. Then if you take the numbers from Waste Pro, yes, if you take the contract extension that they gave to you off of there, yes, it is a dollar, roughly a dollar fifty cheaper on there, and you would not have to raise your rates, but it comes down to, are you happy with that service at the end of the day? Because yes, as we talked about, we have had issues with service, so that's the key thing. we have had issues with service. So that's the key thing in there at the end of the day. Is it worth a dollar fifty that you're going to get high-quality service on? That's, that's to me, and I believe.
Jim, the staff had a recommendation.
Like I said, mayor, the recommendation we gave earlier, if you're going to go off your bids, if you're going to take off the bids, staff recommendation would be go with the low bidder, BCC. But do you have that option? The board has the option to extend the contract, as your city attorney said, or you can throw these bids out entirely and start all over.
Well, I think it's a, it's an easy decision when you can, and I, don't get me wrong. I understand that there's people, some are sitting up here with me that are not happy with the service of Serve Pro, Waste Pro. I used to work for Serve Pro. So I understand that. But you have to be willing to go with a 15% increase. And you have to decide, are you willing to do that and pass that increase to the people that voted to put us up here? I'm not at that point. Are they the best company ever? No. Do they make mistakes? Absolutely. Both companies are going to make mistakes. And I think they're both good companies. I like the people that work for both of them. But I would rather save $175,000. I mean, we are worried about spending $10,000 of lit on projects right now fixing our city. We need the $175,000 to save and spend it in other areas of our city. So my feeling is reject the bids, sign off on the extended contract, and I'll put that in a form of a motion.
All right. Got a motion from Commissioner Hoffman. Do we have a second? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Commissioner Hoffman, I would just, yes, I'm, I'm not happy with the service. And I'm going to tell you, go, go walk down the alleyway behind Reed Avenue and, and just take a big breath of air in. It is disgusting. Those trucks, I've watched them pick up trash, just dripping juice all the way down the alleyway. And it's getting into the businesses. Back, sitting in back at Joe Mama's is, it's terrible. I mean, we, maintenance, maintenance, maintenance. That's the issue. The equipment is not up to code right now, in my opinion. And I'm with you. You don't know about this new company. I've heard that it's going to be all new equipment because this is their first dive into residential. But I like that. And then like you said, mayor, they've had five years to correct it. And they just, I just haven't seen it.
To me, to me, the, I, I can overlook what you just described if I know that I saved the city of St. Joe $175,000. And that's where it comes down. We just look at it differently. I think, I think as being a steward of the money of the city, of the city of St. Joe, I just can't support spending that kind of money.
I don't see where the $175,000 is coming from.
Listen, we spent money repairing a hole in the Washington gym. We didn't have to do that. We could have just let it rain on. I mean, it's kind of how I feel. Why pay for a service that isn't working? That's all I'm saying.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Now, explain to me, explain to me what the cost is for while we're going to add so much money to the bill. What do we, what is that money for?
What you have, mayor, is you have your amount of money that you need to pay your vendor for the service. Okay? Based on this, if you look at, if you take your loan number, which is 1752, that is the amount that you would be paying to your vendor for that service to residential. You've had the same thing on the commercial side. Above that, you have costs that are associated with it, that you're going to have to have things outside of the norm, that you're not going to be collecting from those residential people. Code enforcement, special pickups, those things, we're still going to have those that all those, that we cannot get anybody to pay for, that we're going to have to pay that vendor, or we're going to have to get them means to get those to the landfill itself. So you're going to have costs beyond for administrative costs.
Well, 15% increase. What you're saying?
About a dollar fifty per household is what we figure.
Per month?
Yes.
$18 a year.
18 a year?
Mayor, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to accept the low bid.
All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Ashbrook. Have a second.
I'll second it.
Have a second for Mr. Lowry, Commissioner Lowry. What is your guess?
I'd ask staff work with the low bidder. If you'll put that in form.
That is.
And see if we can get a, a contract that meets our needs.
Wait a minute. Let me get this straight. When you say work with the low bidder, are you saying ask for the low bidder to reduce their fees?
Nope.
Leave the, leave the amounts the same?
All I'm saying is work with the low bidder on any, anything they, they need, legislatively wise. And I, I know they're going to have to work with Waste Pro.
The bidders aren't supposed to change their numbers after the fact. We can work on the terms, rates. You know, one of the, there's, reviewing the, some of the contracts in the past, I've seen there's some clauses and things like that that I'd like to see in, whether it's a termination clause or indemnity clause, things like that. But the bidders aren't supposed to change their numbers. We're awarding them a contract based on the bid. Their numbers can, they're not supposed to be able to change because it'd be unfair to the other bidder.
And based on the current numbers of their bid, we're looking at passing on a 15% increase to the citizens of Port St. Joe.
On that number, it's a dollar fifty. On the residential, it's a dollar fifty a month.
So we, the motion currently is to go with 16, what was it? 50?
Seven. It's 17 something total.
17 dollars and something versus 1602.
Versus 18 on the bids.
All right. Any further discussion from anyone on the board? Any opposition to the motion?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Next item we have, mayor's MLK rezoning update. We do have the second letter to go out to all the residents that would be affected, have property within that boundary. The plan is to have it for the planning board on March the 12th and for the city commission on the 19th of March. Good question. Okay, the next item is Hergel's Michael update. I couldn't move up the debris removal deadline. We have a verbal. We are still waiting on a solid commitment so we can get out to all the citizens on the, on the extension for the debris removal. As soon as we have something in writing on that, we'll be happy to get it out.
Jim, was the anticipated extension time 30 days?
We have a verbal that it would be through March the 15th, but I cannot substantiate that at this point.
What about them having smaller trucks to get into alleyways in places that they can't be in? Did you talk to them about it?
We did earlier. They did indicate they would get through all the alleys. They told us they could take care of that. The one area they will not get in though is the commercial district. So anybody that has any debris in a commercial district, they will be responsible for removing those out. But in the residential areas, they're supposed to take care of the roads and the alleys. But as soon as we get that extension, we definitely get it out too. Mayor, if you want to have, you may have a FEMA representative here today. If you do want to have an update from FEMA or SBA.
Yes. Anyone from FEMA? SBA, anybody here from SBA?
You do have a FEMA representative.
Come on up.
Good afternoon, mayor. My name is Philip Hammer Slam. I'm an integral affairs representative with FEMA. And I liaise with elected officials. We've been working with city manager Jim Anderson. And we are proud to announce that the DRC has come back to Port St. Joe. As you know, it is right next to the city hall. One of the things that we are working on, in fact, I brought flyers today that we're going to go out and put out in the banks, the library, and the college, is promote this disaster recovery center because the numbers are not indicative of what we believe is ongoing in the community. So we are going to continue providing that, getting that information out so we can encourage all of your citizens, the people here in Port St. Joe that may have been in fact impacted, that have questions or concerns, they can go to the disaster recovery center and get those questions responded to. So that's the only update that I have for you today. Any questions in regards to that?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I was told, well, I had a citizen call me and ask where you guys demolish, demolishing houses on Mexico Beach and Bain County areas?
No, sir. FEMA's not in the demolishing business. We provide assistance to homeowners. That, those dollars may have been used by the homeowner to demolish their home. But FEMA does not public demolish.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to ask you that question so I can let them know. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Mayor, any other questions today?
Anything else, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you being on.
Please sign in on our side.
Yep.
Mayor, on the new business, the first item was grant writer. Commissioner Hoffman wanted to talk to you tonight about it.
I would like to discuss the opportunity and maybe the option of the city seeking a grant writer. And after talking to Jim, I believe the city looked at it one time years ago. And I think maybe we could revisit that. And in my mind, there should be some group out there that writes grants for maybe smaller cities. And at one time, they had found a group and it, it was just cost prohibitive. But with the board's support, I think we should at least go back into that area and see is there a, you know, a service available to the city. And it would be on a, on a compensated percentage where it wouldn't cost us anything upfront. Just see if we can get some results on someone that's writing grants for some of these other towns.
That'll get you some great contacts, Commissioner. I've been contacting about three different grant writing firms that that's what they do. And they work off of a percentage.
A lot of those grants are administrative fees. Boil them.
Yeah. And if, if we find out that it is a huge cost, then, then we'll have to consider maybe we can negotiate the, the fee that they charge.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. We have special alert now. And, and two, I know that through Horn, there might be some potential there with one of their guys that they might work with. So.
Yeah, that'd be good. So I, I just wanted to bring it up as a, as an item and discuss it, make sure that, you know, someone wasn't opposed to. Do we need to bring that up?
We need it.
That's what I was saying. Probably appropriate is pointing to Gooey and on cue of a mayor.
I'll tell you what I would probably do. I'd feel more comfortable is we, we're contracting with Horn, right? And I believe they do some of that work. And I know they've got one guy, Mike, or Chris Goris, who's a guru in CDBG and done a lot of Katrina and past Christian and that area, Biloxi area, did a lot of work over there. So that, I mean.
Yeah. And I'm fine with that. I, we just, right now, we have no point. So.
It depends on if the board, if the board is looking for storm-related work specifically, then Horn should offer that. And, and there's been some discussion about Horn. If I may, mayor, can I just clarify where we're standing with Horn?
Yeah, please. I'd, I'd, I'd like to hear.
Are you okay with that, mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Ultimately, this board voted to go out to RFP solicitation for a PA consultant, PA, public assistance side of the federal FEMA and other areas. Ultimately, the county went out. There was an award to Horn. For varying reasons, the county decided that they needed to terminate that solicitation and reissue a solicitation, which in our last meeting, this board approved going out with them again. In between the first solicitation and this last time, the county entered into a 90-day contract with Horn. And just to step back, the hope, belief, hope and belief is that all or a significant, not all, but a significant portion of the fees incurred by Horn will be reimbursed. But it's county, city, that's part of a reimbursed, eligible reimbursable expense. So between this last approval by our board and the previous approval, Mr. Anderson and I tried to reach out to a Horn representative, a local Horn representative. And there was some confusion on their end. Ultimately, because the county was going back out for solicitation, the city is not under contract. Because the point that we finally figured out where the county was and what they were doing, didn't really make sense to enter into a 30-day contract long enough for the big proposal to go out and come back. So at this point, I believe that the solicitation is currently running with the city county. And it's due in the next week or two, if I'm not mistaken, a response is there'll be an award made. And then whoever the awardee is, assuming that the city will have to enter into a separate contract, so assuming the city can negotiate a separate contract that's acceptable to the city, the city will have a PA consultant. Part of that will be helping not only with the FEMA side, but the block grants, CDBG block grants and DR and all those things. So if you're looking for immediate storm-related grants, then I think it's a great option because they're going to be reimbursable, hopefully, expenses. If you're looking for long-term, then you may want to go out to RFQ for other things that may not necessarily just be storm-related. Does that, does that, does that summary make sense?
Yeah, I'm looking for both. So I think let's, let's go down the avenue of working with Horn and getting assistance for the, what they're, you know, experts in, and that's the storm-related. And then let's authorize us to go out for bids on a regular grant writer.
Yeah. And I don't, I, we might need to clarify that. It's not necessarily Horn right now because they, they don't have a bid out. They got a bid out and it may be somebody else.
Yeah.
But I'm with you there.
Yeah. Whoever we end up signing on as a PA will use them for the grant writing for the storm recovery. But I'm also asking that we are permitted to go out for a more permanent, long-range company that would do grant writing.
Would you suggest an RFQ?
Well, I'll, I'll include that in the motion. Yeah.
All right. We have a motion. Commissioner Hoffman, have a second. Second, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries. Five eight.
Commissioner Hoffman, I've been trying to get that accomplished for over a year.
It should have come to me.
The next item we have, mayor's in reference to the Restore at Pot 3, page 16 outlines three applications that will need to be done if the board wished to move forward on. These are actually being processed through Appalachian Regional Planning. The way these work is they flow through the county. The county was working on a contract, I'm not sure if it's done or not, with Appalachian Regional Planning to write the grant applications. But there's three that, that were indicated in there that would need to move forward on the application process, wish the board. But those are the three that are in place right now for consideration.
What's the acquisition?
What's that?
Acquisition, the third one.
That is for the Eastland Sewer System in Beaches area.
Do we have a number on yet? Do we have a number on that yet?
I do not have a number.
The reason that this is on the agenda with my name on it is a while back, we, we entertained the idea briefly, in my mind, about purchasing the sewer plant out at Gulf Air. The county was very helpful in identifying that if we chose not to use the pot three restore money to purchase the Gulf Air sewer plant, there's other options available to us. And, and I saw the list of the other options. And I told Jim, I said, we need to move forward. Because in my mind, $500,000 of restore money just saves the city money spending on other things. One of the priorities that we talked about at our last meeting was fixing the, what are those things called?
Lift stations.
Lift stations. Yeah. Yeah. I should know. It was 600 and something thousand dollars, correct? And that's not even all of them. So I instructed Jim to just create a list of the top three priorities according to staff. And let's seek the funding from Restore Pot Three to, to make that, or to help us. And I don't care which one of the projects we are. I'm open to any of them as long as it's not the wastewater plant out at Gulf Air.
What we did was earlier, gave approval on the SRF, that was 12, the smaller ones you do refer to. We still have created from First Street to 20th Street.
Blue Grove.
So they're. So those are three big ones still that we do not have a funding source of that we want to cover, that's what.
Right, and I guess what we need to do today is to approve staff to start the application process.
Is that your motion?
That'd be the motion, yes.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Hoffman, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Ashbrook. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to discuss, are you recommending to completely throw out the sewer acquisition project?
Which one is it?
That one in the motion, is it?
I understood it was to reallocate that money to some other project.
The sewer system acquisition, is that?
Yeah, the 500.
Is that?
You have three projects that right now that you could apply for that the county's indicated through the grant process.
Okay.
One is North Port St. Joe Sewer Improvements. The second, Beacon Hill. And the third, the 500,000 is for the acquisition of the Beaches Sewer System.
At Gulf Air?
Yes.
Yeah, I would say in my motion, we're striking that from the list of any possibility of purchasing that with any money.
The only, the issue I have is that would be to pick up customers there and we need customers. Granted, we don't have the number and I know that's, I believe there were supposed to be some meetings or some type and I don't know if they happened or what.
There was one meeting where the two owners of the ESAD LLC came to a meeting, saw that we had staff and Mr. Grantlin there to represent the city and they refused to sit down and meet. That's, and I know that, you know, I'd like to have new customers too. But what I did at our last meeting was give a list of what would have to happen before I would even entertain looking at purchasing that system. And one is I want five years of all DEP inspections. I want a new appraisal on the value of the system. And then if we can't get those things done, there's no sense in stalling and not being able to do these other projects that that money is available currently. So that's just two different things, you know. If we decide we want that six months from now or a year from now and all those requirements are met and it turns out it's a financial gain for the city, then I'll be on board. But I don't want to just keep stalling. They've been talking about buying that sewer system for years. I just can't. Yeah, I can't hold up asking for Restore money. It's available now and we have many, many projects that we could spend that money on.
I agree with Mr. Hoffman, but I mean, I agree about the customers being online. But I also think that there are a lot of other things that the money could be useful right now because of the storm. And I think we need to get together and think about it and try to get some other things done right now. Purchasing that, what I think is just not the right time for it. Maybe six months down the line or so, it'll be a good idea. But right now, I'm just not, I just can't do it. I can't take that money and buy, purchase something that, and we don't even have the numbers for it, you know. But I'm not saying six months, a year down the line, I won't think about purchasing it. But right now, I just don't think it's the right time.
That 500,000 right now could pay for the feasibility study on both of the other projects and final design and permitting of Beacon Hill. I mean, we could almost accomplish everything on our list except construction of Beacon Hill with that money that's already there.
What is staff's recommendation on what we would apply specifically for out of these items?
Well, right now, what you have is money that's earmarked for North Port St. Joe Sewer, which I think is a good thing because we just got a verbal approval for CDBG. So that would be a good thing. You could pretty much finish up or make a good portion of the sewer replacement in North Port St. Joe. I think that's spot on. The other one is for Beacon Hill. Right now, there's indications are that maybe a possibility of FEMA happen out with the lift station out of Beacon Hill. And there's money in there to work through that. So I think that's a, if that lift station, if there's able to get money for the lift station, that frees up a lot of money to bring those customers onboard at Beacon Hill. So I think both of those are good. The question you're talking about, the 500,000, we have First Street, 20th Street and Oak Grove, three big lift stations that Mr. Grantlin, Mr. Small was working through to figure out what needs to be done. I think you could use that money if you wish to wish the board, we could go back to consortium and say, hey, look, we want to switch that money for hurricane-damaged lift stations we have and use that money towards those repairs if it's wish the board.
I think my only issue is if we ever want to try to purchase that thing in Gulf Air, we've got a half a million dollars to do that right now. And if we move it, there's no telling when we might be able to do that. That's my dilemma.
I can live without buying it. So I mean, that's not even an issue for me.
The issue's always been the cost.
It's the cost, but the customer base. I mean, and we've lost customers.
Yeah, I understand what.
Well, when they did the feasibility study in 2014, I believe, they identified $267,000 of upgrade and repairs that needed. That was back then, pre-storm. So I have a lot of unanswered questions before.
And I think we all do.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I don't want to do, is hold up the progress of the city and this opportunity for the Restore money because of the possibility of purchasing at some point another item.
So Jim, we're going to have to take this to the county so they can reallocate the funds?
Yes, sir. Main indication we have from county staff was that if it's the wish of the board, okay, you put an application in for the ones you want. You would go back to the consortium to ask them to reallocate that money from one project to the other. Yes.
When does that money come be?
Supposedly this year.
This year sometime?
At the last meeting we had, we met with county staff and met with Appalachian Regional Planning staff, Chris Retan, and they were working on a contract for them to work on those applications. So the applications may be done soon.
I'm not totally want to take it all the way out. We can put it on the whole, because I think it is something we need to keep in the back of our minds down the road. And we can maybe see it later, but as far as just saying, take it out totally, I would like to put it to the side somewhere and say, we're still thinking about doing this if we use the money for the other projects.
I wouldn't say until we take it out, I would just, um, the other things that we can use some money for and later down the line, yeah, I may consider voting for it. But at this moment, I just don't, I just don't see using that money to purchase. There's a lot that needs to be done within the city of Port St. Joe and right now, that's what we need to be concentrating on.
Now, Mr. Kelly, have to appropriate this money to us?
That money has been earmarked right now as Pot 3 money for those three projects.
Yeah, for those?
For those three.
Those three, yes.
And the motion that we're working under right now, my motion, is to move forward with the application of the Pot 3 money to include the items that staff is recommending we seek.
What is that?
That is the two items that.
We have North Port St. Joe and Beacon Hill right off the bat.
Well, you talked about lift stations.
Beacon Hill Septic Sewer, Phase 1 and 2?
Yes.
That's coming out of CDBG money, isn't it? It's coming out of Pot 3 money, isn't it?
This is Pot 3 money right here.
What about the CDBG grant?
That's separate money, but it's not going to be enough to cover everything. So yes, you have money coming from CDBG and this is Pot 3 money from BP. So right now, you have three projects earmarked on there. Staff feels that North Port St. Joe Sewer Improvement, good idea. Beacon Hill, good idea. With the 500,000, you could transfer that over to help us out pay for these lift stations that we need repaired on there. We've got to figure out money to repair. You have some major lift stations that need some major repairs.
Jim, explain that Beacon Hill Septic Sewer. Is it going to pick up the ones that are on Mexico Beach sewer?
Potentially, yes, sir. Indications are, I'm hoping for wrong, Mr. Grantlin, but what would happen is you would have, you have a dry line there right now. So what you have is a dry line to Beacon Hill Park, okay? If there's a funding available for the lift station, that would open it up for the potential to pick up customers, A, those off of Mexico Beach, back to the city because the county would have authority over that because right now they have jurisdiction on it. And then from there, the potential to run independent lines to the houses and the folks in Beacon Hill. Those folks out there have been asking for sewer for a number of years out there. That would open up that for you too.
Well, we got, there is a number of them on Mexico Beach and we'd be picking up those.
I think the number we heard was somewhere in the neighborhood of 85, I think. I can't substantiate that.
Yeah, plus you've got the ones that are across the street on the Gulf fronts that have Septic, you know.
As they build back, yes.
Yeah.
How about the FEMA trailer to Veterans Park? What sewer they tying into?
That's part of the equation there, Mayor. The talks are about burying a lift station there, okay? If that lift station's built there, then that opens it up for the city to process sewer from Beacon Hill back to town.
So might as well FEMA pay for it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say they should probably should.
Yeah.
So just so we're clear on the motion that's being considered, the motion would be to allow staff to apply for funding. And the two items that we'd be applying for is Beacon Hill Septic to Sewer Phase 1 and 2, Port St. Joe Sewer Upgrade Phase 1, which is North Port St. Joe. With the understanding that if city staff can move that money to pay and help pay for the lift station replacements, we will do that.
What would have to take place was we would have to send a letter to the county asking that the consortium change that money over to XYZ project. In this case, if this lift station, if you want to repair, you would ask them to change that funding over from the acquisition of the Beaches Sewer System to repair and maintenance of city lift station.
Right, because if, let's just say that FEMA was not going to pay for the lift station out at Beacon Hill or for whatever reason, that didn't develop and move forward, we could then speak to the consortium and ask if that money be sent over to Public Works to help pay for the $700,000 bill that we're facing with the lift station issue.
If that's the wish of the board, we would send a letter over to the county requesting that money be transferred over in a quest to the consortium.
I'll include that in the motion at this time.
All right, we have a motion, Commissioner Hoffman. Thank you, I understand it.
I seconded it already, but I seconded it again.
I seconded it again. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I'd love for us to be able to purchase that thing, but I'm not really.
It's timing.
It is timing and.
I just don't want it all the way off the board.
I don't either. I don't either.
We're going to change it off the board, I can't go along with the motion.
Yeah, I don't completely take it off.
That one, that one part was just reallocating the 500 that we have for it.
Because I want to keep it, keep it open, you know, but I just can't do it right now. But I don't want to completely take it out of some plans, but right now.
And I don't mind doing it in the next month or two.
Let me tell you how I look at that, that plan. In my mind, it'd be like someone saying, well, I got this car that I'm thinking about getting rid of. I want to sell this car. And you ask them, first question we're all going to ask is, well, how much you want for the car? Well, if they say, well, I don't really want to tell you the price, I'll tell someone else the price, but I'm not going to tell you the price. I want to have a meeting with some of your neighbors, but you're not invited and we're going to talk about the price. And then you're like, what are you talking about? That don't even make sense.
Is that what happened?
And then you say, well, okay, well, I'm still hanging on because I like that car maybe, but I don't really know anything about the car. Let me look under the hood. Can I look under the hood? Well, no, you can't look under the hood. That's, I mean, when you start looking at the details of what's going on with this plant, the possible purchase of that plant, it just baffles my mind. I've never seen business done that way at all. I mean.
Mr. Hoffman, have you had any conversation with the owners, one-on-one, you and them?
Never spoke to them.
So can you evaluate anything if you haven't talked to them?
Well, I know that we.
That's just like buying a car and not talking to a salesman. Well, I'm just making this an area.
And maybe I look at it completely backwards.
At least get them to Curtis and say, hey, I understand y'all want us to buy this. Tell me about it.
Yeah.
You haven't done that.
No, have you talked to them?
I've talked to them several times.
Has everybody else, what, me, had them come to them and talk about buying their sewer plant?
I took the initiative to think, find out what we were talking about. And we still don't know a price.
No, no. The first, the first time I heard about it, I was sitting in the audience and it came up and it's come up since, I don't know, goes back many, many years. And I know when it was brought up in the past, it was brought up and issues that I've spoke to people that used to sit up here in the past and got information from them about what kind of shape it's in, nobody seems to know. I just think we need to do our due diligence and find out what it's worth and what kind of conditions it's in. But there just seems to be other things going on with this. And I hear people on the street talk about it, saying, you know, this is a bad deal. But it's not my job to go in and talk to people about purchasing something. They're the ones that came here. The first time it came here, there was a motion made to have a workshop, if you'll remember. Commissioner Ashbrook brought up the idea and I thought, well, that makes sense. And then at the time, it was Commissioner Buzzett said, well, have we got a price on this? Has anybody spoke to the owner about a price? The answer was no. And it went away for a while. And then for some reason, it's just surfaced back up. And all I want is all the details. I want to know what it's worth. And you don't get that necessarily from the owners. You get that from information from BP, looking at the inspections, have they, you know, do they have a great clean record? But just to be clear, the motion that I've made does not include the purchase of Gulf Air Treatment Plant.
All right. I will just make one more comment, and that is the one thing that's missing from the sewer system acquisition. Both of these other projects have a feasibility study built in and there's a cost associated with that. That's to find out if it can even be done and preliminary design work. We haven't done that now. I do invite you, please go talk to John, he's got a great slideshow. He is not a big fan of the sewer. He's got camera angles all over it and it is going to cost some money to fix it up, you know. The argument is there is a price, there is some, at some point where the cost to purchase it is going to be worth it. And I just don't think we've got a price offered to us. But it's not to say that, you know, what if we got a million dollars, which says total estimated is a million? What if we got that? Then would we still say no? I don't know. So I think we really do have to do our homework and I think an appraisal's a great idea. But let's not just appraise the infrastructure, let's appraise the customer value, appraise it as a business as well.
Absolutely, I agree. What I don't want to see is see us as commissioners hold up moving towards the Restore funding because of the option of maybe purchasing something. I think that's crazy thinking. We need to move forward. We have things in the city of St. Joe that need to be fixed. We have $700,000 in lift station repairs. I'm not going to stop everything because of the possibility of buying something that we don't even agree on. So that's why I'm removing that from the motion. Let's move forward and apply for the money.
Your second stand?
Yes.
All right, first and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes three to you.
The last item we have on our new business today, Mayor's Utility Building Write-Off Policy. Mayor want to talk to us tonight about it?
Yeah. I really thought I knew what a policy was.
You're not the only one, Mayor.
Uh-huh. I really thought I knew. And then I went back and I listened to the meeting on 4417, I think it was. And then I saw what it was and it was nowhere near what I thought it was. I never have intended for any water customers of ours to pay for water that goes on the ground. I mean, I thought we had a policy, if it was on their side of the meter, so many times above the average, then we did a six-month average on water. That will bring the sewer down and they paid the six-month average. That will bring the sewer down, and they pay the six-month average. And that's not how it works. The way it works is we do an average on the sewer. That brings the sewer down, don't do nothing for the water. And then we charge our customers the lowest rate we can per thousand dollars. So we're actually making our citizens, our water users, pay for water that never went in our sewer system, they never got into their house, and they fix it as soon as they can. Now, I've heard other commissioners say in the past, well, they'll take advantage of it. Well, yes. If you let people take advantage of stuff, there are all people that will do that. That's what we got to be diligent and investigate when we think it needs to be investigated. But I am just not happy that any water customer pays for any water that goes on the ground. I never understood that until I was told it because the customer came to me and I told him how it worked, and then they come back to me and said, no, it don't work that way. And then I went down to City Hall and I talked to Ms. Cole, and she told me how it was working, and then I had Jim give me a copy of it. I just have to say it's nowhere near what I thought it was. Maybe that's my stupidity, I don't know. But I didn't think it was that.
I thought it was based on the water, too. I didn't realize it was on sewer.
Mayor, I just think it could easily be simplified by saying either the last six months average of your bill, or the last six of the same month if you've been a customer for six years. And just, just average it. Why is it lowest cost per thousand? Just take the bill, and if they fixed their leak, great. If they come back the next month, say, I'm sorry, you shouldn't fix the leak. But do it one time in a 12-month period, make that adjustment whichever is better for them, either six years or six months, and just average it out. I mean, I had one guy say, well, they averaged it, but I filled my pool in July, and now it's November, so that average is a little high.
Right.
I just think it could be simplified, and I'm bullied by, actually, Adam, did you get a chance to look at it yet? He was going to look at this and maybe come up with a simpler solution.
There are a number of ways to change it based off what the board wants. I spoke to Mr. Anderson about it, and evidently this was approved, this version was approved by the board on 4417. So if the board's not happy and wants to change the policy, then you can certainly distract Mr. Anderson out of coming up with a simple policy.
It'll be before the change in two years.
It sounds like, it sounds like what you're talking about, Mayor, is if you wanted a six-month average on the water side, too, I think you could simply duplicate what you're doing on the sewer side where it says, number one, 100% credit for the related sewer charge, but not less than six-month average. I think you could, if the board wishes to say 100% credit for the related water charge, but not less than a six-month average. So you'd have a number one or a number two that relates strictly to the sewer, and one that relates to the water.
Because sewer bills are directly tied to water usage.
Absolutely. Because right now they do that, we have permission to do the average sewer, but this policy says that we have to make sure it's more than three times on there, which you may want to keep that portion in there, but you could.
I'll mind that part.
But you may want to say, and allow 100% credit for the waste sewer, but not less than a six-month average.
Yeah, I just, to do an average, and then they not have to pay for any water running on the ground other than what the average cost for it usually is.
Yeah, I think that's fair, because we're living in a city that, and I'm not sure, but if we still do it, but I know I've rode by hydrants and we're dumping tens of thousands of gallons, if not millions of gallons of water, on the ground because we're trying to have better water. So to turn around and tell someone they got to pay for doing the same thing makes no sense to me. So, yeah, I think we need to change in the language to where we're not penalizing people for doing the same thing we've done. Or do we still do that, flush our water lines from time to time?
That's a Larry question, I'm not sure what he's doing there on there.
I know I've seen that.
That's right here.
Yeah, they just dumping water, dumping water, and then somebody had a toilet that ran while they were gone for the week. I don't think they should pay for any of that, but that's just me.
I would like for it to say the three times the water usage, and then do a six-month average on the water usage.
Treat the water just like the sewer, Mayor?
Same, that's it.
Somebody put that in a form of motion, we can make that.
So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ashbrook, Second Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? So we're not going to be charging customers $4 per thousand for water that runs on the ground.
This basis, Mayor, what you're looking at is we'll do a six-month, if it's more than three times, it'll be based on a six-month average is what it'll be based on, instead of charging that lowest tier of the city.
So you're going to keep in the new language, are you comfortable keeping in that the bill has to be triple?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, because if you got a big enough lease, you know that.
What if, but what if someone, like my bill, let's say it's a hundred dollars a month, and I got a $290 bill? There's nothing I could do about it, because it's not three times the bill.
Because you're actually looking at the consumption is what you look at. So let's say that, in order to qualify, let's say that my average is 3,000 gallons a month. In order for me to qualify, I have to use 9,000 one dollars.
Oh, okay, it's not amount of the bill.
No, it's not dollars, because you got trash and everything else involved, it's gallons.
Okay, okay.
All right. So we're all clear on what we're doing? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five o.
Thank you.
Go right, Jim, that's you.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Go right. Water department. I mean, public works, let's go to there first.
Just a real quick update for the board, Mayor. Currently, the Sixth and Seventh Street alley bids are out. They'll close next Friday, the 15th. We'll have that information back to the board on the 19th meeting for your guys' consideration as to what you want to do with that.
All right, and so people, you don't know what he's talking about, we've had some bad drainage problems in the alleyways there, and some people's yards are getting flooded. And we talked about doing this one time, it would be an astronomical cost to the city. But now I think we decided we can do it ourselves and save a good bit of money. And we're hoping this will eliminate the problem that people have, but some people's land is low, too. I mean, you got low land, you know, waters will go to the lowest point. But to those people that live there on Savage Street, we're going to try to do what we can. We want you to know, we're going to work on it. It's been a long time coming.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak on this bidding process. What I, and this is all new to me, but what I discovered was, when we started talking about fixing this problem, and part of the problem is the city's responsibility, well, I got with John, I got with some of the homeowners, and we decided, well, let's, let's get bids and all. Well, we approved that, and then we found out, or John found out, that the price was going to be higher, which required an actual permission to go out for bid. I don't know what we need to do to change this, but the whole system, there is a breakdown in the system when a department head has to wait on us to meet as a commission to get, be given permission to go out for a bid. And I asked Jim, I said, that don't make any sense to me. Usually, if you're running a department, all you're doing is asking for bids. You're in no way authorized to do the work. And Jim was saying, well, in years past, there was a time or two that a commissioner or the mayor, whoever it might have been, I don't know, was kind of blindsided about a project that was being looked at. And when the bids were being discussed, they felt like, well, I didn't know anything about it. So they just kind of leaned towards requiring the department heads to seek permission to go and get prices, and that's craziness. In this, in this situation, it has probably put this project back 90 days. And we're still, or I should say, it'll be 90 days before we get anything done, because when we go three weeks without meeting, and then the timeframe for the window of bids, I don't know what we need to change it, but we need to change that. We need to go back to the system where department heads feel and are encouraged to be looking at projects and getting bids. And then they come and say, like, if John would have came weeks ago, he could have come up here and said, hey, guys, I'm looking at buying the pipe, having my own personnel do the job, and here's the bids. Boom, job's done. But whatever that system we're working under is just not very productive, especially to the people whose yard is flooded every single time it rains. So if we can just start looking at some kind of protocol change, if we got to go through the attorney, or if we got to amend something, we need to focus on that. It is really holding back business.
As of right now, I know we got a lot of issues right now. I don't mind just a simple email sent to all of us. Because I know there are emergency situations, especially right now, so.
With the procurement process, it's going to come back to you anyways before we award anything over $10,000 anyway, so that's easy enough.
So we have an understanding we can change that.
Start sending out, be able to email those files.
Yeah, we'll just let you know anytime we go, what, to be able to something on there that we got a project we may or may not want to do. It's easy enough.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir, what's that?
Any questions for John? I have to get in a couple of kudos, I've called him up a few times and get some stuff done, and he's performing real well for me, John, I appreciate you. Thank you very much. Mike Lucor?
We continue to work with our insurance agent submitting revisions as new evidence of damages found, and we've just submitted the $600,000 cost to repair the lift stations. They're working to revise the estimates, preliminary numbers still on what we can expect to receive from our damages. And when we get those in, I'll certainly report those back to you, and that'll certainly help with the discussion on our costs associated with lift station repairs specifically. We continue to work with FEMA, we're doing site visits, assessing all the damage to our facilities, and we're working through that process as well. It's slow, but we continue to move forward on both those fronts.
Yeah, someone, might have been the attorney, mentioned that there was some unsatisfaction with the insurance company, or is that the case?
I can only speak for me, I haven't spoken to Mr. Lucor about it.
The reason why I'm saying that is, if that's the case, we need to contact Dwight and get him.
I think the return on the numbers from the insurance company are considerably low based off of my conversations, but that's my opinion, not the opinion of Mr. Lucor or Mr. Anderson or anybody.
Low on our stuff?
Yes.
Well, I'll push the representative to deliver us the revised numbers, and then we can get together and do an assessment and see where we stand and come back to you with, with how we feel that they're responding to our needs as far as coverage and.
And we can always file supplemental claims. I mean, that's.
Absolutely.
But if that ever gets to be a case, we need to get Dwight on it.
Yeah, and they have dragged, they have dragged their feet a little bit on a lot of these claims, but I haven't been pushing, so I need to push, and then we get together and see where we are.
I just don't want to hear where they're dragging, because somebody can do something about it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Jim?
Yeah, we are, the West Water Plant, we've got some filter issues. We've pushed the filters really, really hard, busted a lot of our filters. And just so you guys understand, everything that comes out of the pond has to be filtered before we throw it out to the spray field. So those are the filters I'm talking about. We've got 1,004 filter panels, each are over a hundred bucks a piece, so, and they've got anywhere from a three- to five-year life for a nylon filter. Same companies now come out with stainless steel filters. The stainless steel filters are $12.50 more per filter. Then there's, they don't know really how much longer they're going to last, because they haven't been in service for a couple of years. But the expectation is it will be three to five times longer if you're from the same panel.
Are we meeting standards now on the spray field?
Yes. We're, we're, right now, in the winter time, we do well. And right now, we're well under our permit limits, you know, as far as everything we send out, so we're doing well. So, but we're going to have to have some filters. We've got a lot of them busted. So what I'd like to do is order 100 stainless steel filters. That's 13,900 bucks for 100 filters. In the next couple of years, we're going to have to replace all of them. We shouldn't have to replace the stainless ones for, until we all retire, and they should be there for a long time. But right now, we're going to need at least 100, just to replace the ones that are busted. So we're doing it, but we're limping.
Do you have that in the budget?
We do, we've moved, I've talked to Mike, we've moved some stuff around. This is a sole source thing, so we don't have to worry about, you know, going out for bids, because there's only one company that makes these things for this equipment. So.
Yeah, he has the funds, it'll put a little tight on his repair and maintenance going forward, but he certainly has the funds. He's purchased $9,000 out of his general budget the last two years, so it's not that much more than we have purchased over the last two years.
Yeah, this is, I guess this would be an example of what I was just talking about. You come to the board, you ask for a budget, we approve a budget. You're the director, the head of that department, it's in your budget. I don't even see why it comes here. You should have just already ordered the filters, the way I look at it.
Commissioner Hoffman, the reason being, because our procurement policy says anything over $10,000 has to come before you.
And this is a sole source.
Yeah, it's a sole source, and it's so you don't have to go out to bid for it, but yes, sir, does.
Okay. There are rules then.
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah.
Are we still under that consent order?
We are, and we'll, we'll be for three years.
Is this going to take us any steps closer out from under it?
For the next three years, we're going to be under the consent order. So regardless of whatever we do, we're under that consent order for three years. What it will do is, after that three years is up, these 100 filters, we won't have to be replaced. You know, they're not going to be busted right in the middle of a run, through that consent. So, and this is something that, you know, next year, I'll have to budget, you know, more filters rather than some of the other things that I budgeted, because we're going to have to keep pushing these filters on through until they're all replaced. That's just part of that system. So it's over $100,000 in just filters alone, you know, and that piece of equipment.
Cheaper than Larry's filters.
Yeah, yeah, but it's still going to hard to swallow sometimes.
So you do need a motion, you go out and buy them?
Yes, I do.
I'll make that motion.
All right, and a motion from Commissioner Hoffman, Second. And Commissioner Ashbrook, any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five o.
We're still spraying seven days a week, probably for two, three more weeks, and then we'll go to six days a week, so start slowing down. We've almost got two feet of room on the pond. That's where we get out of the panic mode, and we start, you know, taking a short day on Sunday, you know, that kind of stuff. We haven't got there yet, but we're still pushing.
All right. That's all I got. Any more questions, Kevin? Jim, you want just some surface water?
Yes, sir, I can. We actually had the tank, the groundwater's tank was cleaned last week, we did have the divers come in, and we got a good report from there. They said they didn't see a lot of accumulation in the bottom of the tank, which is a good thing for us. That shows that our water quality has drastically improved over the last couple of years, so that has been.
Yeah, I told Kevin, he could have put his, he could have just went on down and saved us some money, man. He didn't want to do it. All right. I'll walk you to it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. A few updates, the Langston Drive sidewalk project, the pre-construction meeting is scheduled for this Thursday at 10:00. And so at that meeting, they'll set a posted proceed date, so we'll know after that on the start date, but it's very, very close. Phase 19 has a task order here for the design of what's called Garrison Avenue Phase Two. That was a DOT grant that we applied for a couple of years ago, and they funded, that money's now available, and they feel the city can start working on it. So that task order is there for your consideration.
It would be paid through the grants, a staff recommendation to a, what you got there.
That's up on 16th Street to Madison, that would be what that Phase Two covers.
Any motion for that?
About somebody's staff recommendation.
Got a motion from Commissioner Lowry, Second.
Senator.
Second, Commissioner Langston, any further discussion? Any opposition to the motion? Motion carries five o.
The park task orders mentioned earlier, we'll have later this month, we'll wrap those up and be ready to advertise those, or whatever the next step is you want to do on those. That's for both, you know, Park, Boeington Lake and Frank Main. The trail lighting grant, which is that RTP grant, we've revised the scope of work based on kind of the needs of the city now in core part. I've given that Mr. Kennedy along with a schedule, a new schedule and a new budget. And so, he's reviewing that as soon as he's, whatever comments he has, we'll incorporate those and get those sent to the state so we can get that started with the new scope. So, and then the road paving, you've probably noticed Williams Avenue and the intersection there, First Street, they knocked those out. They still have to strip it. They'll come back and strip it after the cure time. But then Eighth Street's the last one they owe you. And I don't have a date on that yet, but that's the last one they owe you. Any questions for me?
Now, what time did you say that meeting is on Thursday?
I believe it's 10 o'clock.
And that's in the...
At the administration building in the conference room out there.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Police?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda today. Anyone has any questions?
Can you take a look for me? I mentioned this actually at our downtown redevelopment meeting, but there's no signage. When you're looking, when you're going down First Street towards 98, I actually saw two cars almost sideswiped each other, both trying to go straight. They weren't quite sure which lane they should've been in to go straight. Is there any way to get signage above saying right turn only so people know what lane to be in?
We can look into that.
Okay.
I would rather get DOT down here and let them change their lights.
For that. Something's gotta give there.
Well, that costs us money and Clay would have to...
Mayor, Chief Maywell, chief's up here. It might be a good time. It's certainly not necessarily law enforcement related, but I had a conversation with him this morning. We're putting a lot of work into our 10th Street ball fields right now and we're having a continuing problem with folks in our city, whether the citizens or visitors, utilizing those fields as a dog-walking park. And what's happening is those dogs are leaving presents, you know, on the field. And I just wanted to pass on, just in general, that if folks could, I mean, that's where our children play. They're playing ball there. They don't need to be dodging, you know, piles of dog food. But there's a place and a time, I guess, to walk your dog and it's certainly not a park that children play on. So, if you could be courteous, just take your dogs elsewhere. I understand it's fenced and you feel like you can let them loose, but again, that's not the appropriate place to let your dogs loose.
Yeah, they probably lost Beacon Hill Park because I think they had taken one of those fields and actually permitted the dogs to run around in that field. But yeah, we need to put some signs out.
Well, the signs are up. The signs are there, right. They just choose to ignore it. Anyway, just wanted to throw that out there.
Absolutely. We talked about this one and we put a post on our police department Facebook page. So, maybe it'll help get the word out, but if everybody else can help get the word out, that'd be good. We see them, we'll advise.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, of course, our code enforcer, got a report there from him everybody can look at. Ms. Charlotte?
I don't have anything, sir.
Nothing?
No, sir.
All right. Well, this time, we'll go to citizens wishing to be heard. Does anyone in the audience want to be heard? Get your hand way up. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner... Just want to let everybody know with a company called WTS Tractor Service. And we provide any kind of work that can be done with heavy equipment, clearing asphalt, water storms, sewer, lift station, infrastructure work. We also crush concrete. This is a company out of Plant City. We're gonna be Gulf County based now as of last week, so I'm gonna make myself available and let you know what our services are.
You got any cards yet?
Yeah, I got plenty of cards.
But you leave us all alone?
Okay.
Yeah, I want to make sure that the company is put on the list if we have emails that we send out.
Right.
Because I've known Little Randy. It's weird to see, you don't look little anymore.
I know.
I guess you gotta get love beside you so you still be Little Randy.
Standing on this side, I've known a lot of you. Everyone up and now we're... But I look forward to working with the city and the county in future projects. I know we got a lot going on and we can be a part of the rebuild. And our company looks for a long-term presence in the community. We got a lot of people here who are storm chasers and we need them. That's good, but that's not what we're doing. So, I'm gonna let you guys know and I'll get you contact information. And I look forward to working with you guys in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Sign in, please, sir. Anyone else in the public? This side? Anybody from over here? I'm checking my outside out. All right. Commissioner Langston, we'll start with you.
I've been working with Ms. Ades and Ms. Jill Bibby on the community garden. We got together a couple of times and they're coming up with some great ideas. I just want to let everybody know that we're kind of getting back focused on that and we're gonna be wide open. And I appreciate you guys.
Glad to hear things like that. It seems like we're getting back into sort of a routine and having disaster mode on the side. It's exciting to see and it's exciting to hear the reports from our building department about the number of permits being pulled. It looks like we're coming back. We're coming back strong. Everybody just hang in there. The city, the city's gonna take a hit this next year on our ad-orm collections. But all we gotta do is hang in there. The people that stick it out are gonna reap the benefits of what this city's gonna become and it's gonna be a great place again. That is all that I have, Mayor.
Yeah, I can kind of echo about how we're gonna take a hit on our ad-orm dollars also in our water and sewer revenue as well. Saying that, there's a trial meeting, I believe, Friday or is it tomorrow? Friday, I think it's Friday, I think. Jim, our application, the county put in for us and I believe the school board is included as well. Will you do a letter of support for that application, supporting our loss in revenue and our ad-orm? And if you can get it done, warn Jaeger, he's going to that meeting.
Okay.
Just supporting that application.
I'm not sure when it wears that, you know?
I'm not sure. I imagine in Bay County, but...
Bay County, Corrados.
Corrados. Bay County.
Mr. Hoffman?
The only thing I have is I went down and looked at the marina and mainly the part where Sancho owns the Bulkhead. And I know the captain is here that run or has ran the fishing express. We just need to stay focused when we have the manpower. The guys were getting a lot of work done the other day. I was impressed moving stuff around. The Bulkhead looked good to me. I'm now an engineer. But if we have to get Clay's bunch down there and look at it and sign off on it, I want to move towards accommodating not only that boat, which is gonna bring people in to go fishing. We need to be focusing on two phases in my mind. One, cleaning up, restoring, getting our people, houses and businesses. But we also need to be looking at the people that are still gonna come in the next month or two. They're coming, the same joke. And that boat is just one small example of supplying the need for the tourist industry. So, that's all I have.
All right. I just want to thank each and every one of you for being here today. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.